Ballot to be given in order to start the votes, please.
The votes are being taken to the flag of the United States of America and to the authority for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Here.
Rosack?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Mayor Lansford?
Here.
Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Well, there are no additions or subtractions to the agenda, but I would like to request that Item 7, Item 7, the redevelopment agreement to facilitate Project Clear, be moved up to immediately follow the presentation section right after the Commonwealth Edison presentation, if you don't object.
Anybody have any objections? We need a motion to amend the agenda. Second?
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye. We'll move to public comment. Anyone who'd like to address the council, please step over to the podium and state your name. Just remind everybody that there is a three-minute limit.
My name is Ronald Christiansen. I live at 608 North Shabano Street in Streeter, Illinois. And a few years ago, when the sewers were improved on Shabano Street and the drains were moved, I get a lot of pounding right in front of my house on the street. The street is completely tore up with so many potholes you couldn't count them all. And I still have semis that drive down my street. There's no real signs that say that street is only residential street. There is one in the north going south, but the truck's going north toward Owens, Illinois. There's no signs that say it's not a truck route. And I can watch, I can sit in my kitchen and watch semis going north of Illinois, going to Owens, Illinois, all the time. And I know everybody in Streeter was going to complain about potholes, but this street is really bad. I mean, you can throw all the pads you want, but if you don't cut something out of that street and just put in some new stuff, it's just terrible. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Anyone else? If not, then we will have a presentation from Commonwealth Edison.
Mayor Council, as you know, we've been, beginning in the last quarter of 2018, we were working with Commonwealth Edison on a program to retrofit about 85% of the lights in the city of Streeter that are owned by Commonwealth Edison, the rest are owned by the city, to convert most of them from high-pressure sodium to LED lighting. And not only does this result in better light, but also a lesser cost for the city. And I thought this would be a good time to do it because by now, although Commonwealth Edison still has several months to go to finish the project, there's been enough change that I think citizens have seen it and started to remark on it. So I thought it would be good to have an update from Commonwealth Edison with the details. And Jeff has graciously agreed to come and give that presentation.
Thank you.
I was almost going to let Scott give the rest of my speech. He was doing such a good job. But as Scott did say, Commonwealth Edison has been investigating LED lights for a number of years. And just recently, we have been able to install lights where we formerly had high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor lights, take advantage of some money from the state, and swap them out at absolutely no cost to the city. And so what we have done is what Scott referred to, and we started a two-year plan to get all the lights changed out in the city of Streeter. And so in 2008, we have completed 589 of the approximately 1,200 lights in town. We can't change all 1,200 of them. There are a few still that are pole-top lights that they do not make an LED fixture, but we're going to change as many as we just possibly can. So in 2019, we still have about 460 that we are going to be finishing by the end of the second quarter. And if you do the math in your head, you will see that it doesn't quite add up to the number. So what is happening is right now, if you have a street light that fails, one of the mercury vapor or the high-pressure sodium, instead of us replacing a high-pressure sodium with a new high-pressure sodium, it makes no sense. If we're going to change it anyway, we just go ahead and put the new LED fixture in and put it down on our list, and we no longer install high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor lights. So that's why you will see occasionally some of these new, whiter lights that are in the neighborhoods when everything else hasn't been changed out. Just doesn't make any sense to roll a truck back a second time to change the light. But when we are totally complete with this project, there is some very good news. The project itself will reduce carbon dioxide by 513, 232 pounds annually, which is more than 257 tons of carbon dioxide that won't be released to the atmosphere. It's an equivalent of planting 274 acres of trees or taking 50 cars off the roadway permanently. And the electricity that is saved by this project is enough to power about 135 homes in the Streeter area. Or 100 homes if you have teenagers, okay? Either one. But actually, from the city's point of view, there's a lot better news. The cost savings annually to the city of Streeter will be just short of $37,000. So that includes $6,700 in savings. LED lights have a lesser cost on a monthly rental and maintenance basis, and also approximately $30,000 in lower electricity costs every year. So with an LED light, you will see a lot better light output. Most of the light from an LED is directed straight down into the intersections or the roadways. So you don't see the spill, you don't see a lot of light up in the air or around, so it's actually a lot more efficient. The longer bulb life, an LED bulb will last 15 or 16 years, as opposed to a current one, which is about three years. And so we don't have to come out and change the light bulbs nearly as often with an LED light. So with that, we're also installing something which is called a smart node. On top of the streetlights, there is typically a fennel cell. That senses when it comes on, when it gets dark enough, and then it goes off in the morning. We are putting in the ability of communicating with our smart grid meters. So at a point in the future, we'll be able to have the streetlights communicate themselves to the meter system, and it will relay a message to us. So if you have a streetlight that has no usage over a 24-hour period, that means something's wrong or the bulb is burnt out. If you have a streetlight that is showing zero voltage, it means somebody has cut the wire or the cable in the ground. So once we get the system operational with smart nodes and the communications, we won't even have to have somebody calling a streetlight outage anymore. So in this, the project is to replace all the lights in the city of Streeter that we can. The one thing I do have to say is everybody knows how Streeter has some areas that are the city and some that are unincorporated, and they intertwine. We are replacing the lights in the city limits at this point. So you may get questions about how come this one was done and this one wasn't. If this one is outside the city limits, it will be about three years before we start replacing those. So we are looking to finish up by the end of the second quarter. We're a little behind this year. We've had polar vortexes and ice storms and everything else. So we're going to get back on track and keep working on the city lights. So with that, I'm open to any questions, if you have any comments or concerns.
My only comment is, how'd you get money for the state of Illinois?
Here's the secret. We pay it in, and then you get it back. And so there is a line item on every bill that says, you know, so much of it is credited to energy efficiency, and these lights are a lot more energy efficient, so that same money comes right back to swap the lights out for energy efficiency. Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jeff. Really appreciate it. So the next item is, the one that, this is Item 7, has been adjusted to the front of the agenda. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of introductions as a part of this item. Project Clear is a code name for what Sam Maselli with Vector Manufacturing is going to introduce today. This is a project that we've been working on in the city with the direct involvement of Mayor Lansford and you, and your involvement with the Greater Livingston County Economic Development Council, and your direct work with Vector through many months and countless hours. Adam Donce, who's the executive director, stand-up at the executive director of the Greater Livingston County Economic Development Council, its partnership with them, and with the state of Illinois, and chiefly with Vector Manufacturing. And so I'm going to shut up and let Sam Maselli talk about this really exciting announcement. And, but before he does, sorry, I forgot my part. There is a resolution on the DI, which is effectively a memorandum of understanding whereby the city of Streeter agrees to assist in this major expansion of our largest employer in the form of a combination of enterprise zone credits, tax increment financing, job training benefits, and other incentives to make this possible. And so it is, we discussed this with the council in the executive session, and so it's my request that this resolution be approved this time. The one thing that I want to say about it is, the resolution provides, sorry, I did mention this earlier, provides that as soon as the final version of the redevelopment agreement gets through the attorneys, that Mayor, city manager is authorized to sign. If you would rather have it come back to you for final action later days, you can, but that's what the current language of the resolution says.
Is it my recommendation to approve it tonight? Now I entertain a motion to approve a redevelopment agreement to facilitate Project Clear. Still moved, Your Honor? Second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli, forth yours.
On behalf of Vector and Federal Signal, I'd like to thank the city and the Greater Livingston County Economic Development Council, as well as the state of Illinois for the assistance on this project. Your support has helped us put it over the, put it past the finish line. What we're talking about in terms of the project is a about 100,000 square foot expansion at our Vector facility here in Streeter over the next year. We plan on breaking ground. We plan on moving forward within the first quarter, with the majority of the facility being completed by the end of this year. That will expand all of our departments, so fabrication, welding, paint, assembly, as well as engineering, office support, and new test facilities for our trucks as our business has continued to grow. We're very appreciative of the relationship that we have with the city and with you, Mayor Lansford. You've been an advocate for us for a long time, and certainly this community has been an outstanding place for us to grow. And I think this sends a really strong message to the community that we're here, that we're committed. Over the next 24 months, we expect that this will add upwards of 90 new jobs, that's both in the shop and in the salary position. So we're very excited about it. Our business has been strong, and this is a huge step for us in terms of growing our business. So it's a great step for us for the short term and a great step for us for the long term. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions while I'm answering questions.
Do you want to talk a little bit about some of the job training parts of this, about how soon would that just start?
We're, we'll be adding positions almost immediately because we've got to get people on board and get them up to speed with the product. We're looking at expansion almost immediately in terms of capacity. We need the positions, and we need to go to business immediately.
So there's an immediate impact on the local economy, even though the project is scheduled to be 24 months?
The project is scheduled to be completed within about 12 months, the actual facility, but we will be staffing up beginning immediately. We'll be bringing people on board, and then we'll be able, we'll have the room to continue to expand and move people up the pitch shift.
Is there a press release that's going out?
We do have a press release that we'd like that we can distribute. This is the new version. Sam, I just want to say thank you again. I mean, this is going to affect everything, the real estate market, I mean, you're talking more homes, more sales tags, more everything. We're excited.
Anybody else from the media?
And again, I mean, we have ultimate confidence in this new resolution. It's been a, we have a great relationship with the high schools and developing new talent and through all the, all the love of it. So we're very excited.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
I failed to introduce Jason Lake with, with Chrisman Wakefield. He was also a key component in a lot of meetings, so thanks for coming to Streeter, Jason. We look forward to meeting, to working with all of you.
Can we move on? Yeah. Move then to old business, Item 1.
Mayor Council, Item 1 was deferred table, rather, from the last month's meeting while we made additional notifications in accordance with state statute for this type, for this type of an annexation. This property is basically the sand loading facility in Newtown Township in the southeast part of the city, plus the adjoining rail, plus another piece of the rail extending all the way to Illinois Street on the south side of the Vector property. It's a voluntary annexation by the Norfolk Southern Railroad.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to annex properties owned by the Norfolk Southern Railroad in Livingston County on Livingston Road into the city of Streeter. Still moved. For a second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item 2.
Mayor Council, this is also an annexation into LaSalle County, in this case instead of Livingston. It's a 17-acre tract of land. It says on Gulf Road, we're not annexing all Gulf Road, it just happens to be that's its access and its likely mailing address. It's currently, it's an agricultural piece of property. It is not the property that is immediately west of the North Point subdivision, the North Point Shopping Center. It's 17 acres west of that that's being annexed. Again, on a voluntary petition from the owner.
I entertain a motion to annex the property on Gulf Road in the South County into the city of Streeter. For a second.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item 3.
Mayor Council, Item 3, well, first of all, the Plan Commission met earlier this month. They had only one item on their agenda this month, and it's the recommendation of a plat to redo the configuration of parcels adjoining Vector. This action is a companion piece to the resolutions you just approved to facilitate the Vector plant expansion, because they're going to be buying a large tract of land from the Streeter IDI, which is the owner of that land, and this plat will facilitate that. So Items 3 and 4 are linked. The first is a required simple motion to accept, receive, and file a report of the Plan Commission, and then Item 4 is actually voting on the ordinance to revise the plat as shown in the package material.
I entertain a motion placed on file, the Plan Commission's recommendation, 2019-0120, approve a revised subdivision plat for Streeter IDI land in Livingston County. Still moved. Second. Any other discussion? I'll just make one comment. We talk about economic development, and IDI was formed probably 30 years ago by a group of individuals and businesses in town, where they put up the money to purchase land, more specifically for development in Streeter. And this is the second parcel, and, you know, I think now that the first two parcels are probably pretty much gone, and we'll probably be looking for a third one at some point in time. So economic development doesn't happen overnight. It's a planning process, but it does work, and I, my hat's off IDI. Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item 4. I entertain a motion to approve a revised subdivision plat for Streeter IDI in Livingston County.
Still moved.
For a second. Next. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item 5.
Mayor Council, this ordinance has, in terms of final passage tonight, has been more than a year in the making. You asked that the city develop a system that passes legal muster to provide for the inspection and subsequent permitting for people who are engaged in rental housing as a, providing rental housing as a business. The about purpose is, is not for revenue generation. In fact, this one will not generate net revenues. Net, over, our costs will likely exceed the revenues, but solely for the purpose of improving the housing stock in Streeter. Your direction was that we achieve that goal in a way that is not onerous on property owners, and that, and that the responsibility and even the cost of it falls disproportionately, I guess is the best way to say it, on those units that require lots of inspection and those that are subcode. And so we had, in order to make sure that we were trying to find a way that advances your housing objectives, but still not be an onerous burden on the landlords, we had several meetings with the landlords. And I want to say that I'm very appreciative of the landlords. They made a lot of suggestions, a lot of positive comments, and I think that Jeremy, upwards of 85% or so of the recommendations they made were incorporated into the ordinance, and I think that the ordinance is better for them. And the, upon passage, we will be setting out different sections of the community, because we're not going to take them all at once, and we're going to be starting with the ones that have had code problems in the packs, because that's really where the problem is. So this is a long process. I think council wanted to come to you for final action before it did, but I think that the extra time we took resulted in a better work. So, Jeremy, anything else you want to say?
No, as I, Scott said, we had a one large landlord open meeting with, invited open call for all landlords and filled this room, so had that meeting, and we had, after that, we formed a smaller group of about 20, 20 to 25 landlords, met and went through individual changes, so they've met twice or three times, last time being two weeks ago, and helped draft the ordinance party.
Jeremy and I met with Mr., is it Chelly?
Yes.
Okay. And subsequently from that, I think there's been a couple of other landlords in contact with Jeremy, and with a proposal that it would be self-regulated co-op. And I know that Cheryl was looking at that from a legal standpoint. And my recommendation tonight would be that we take action on the ordinance as presented, and then we continue to have the meeting with the landlords that want to, and if there is a way of incorporating what they're proposing into this, then we would amend that ordinance in later date, that we take action on the plan tonight as presented. It's been a year, and we've had a lot of meetings. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve and adopt a rental inspection and permitting program for the city of Streeter to sell in Livingston Counties. For a second. Any other discussion?
The other thing I'd like to say, Your Honor, is when this first came out, I was not supportive of it at all. But, you know, when you get out in the community and you talk to them, you see firsthand, I mean, just for the 20-plus years I was in the fire department, I think I've been in them, if not all these homes, and you see firsthand some of the conditions. And it's not fair to the people that live next door, too. I mean, yes, it's not fair to the tenant, but also, and, you know, the people in our town, they want their properties cleaned up, their neighborhoods cleaned up, and I think this is, I've heard nothing but good things come out of this, so I'm very supportive of it.
Anything else? All right, Clerk Colerole.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
And Mr. Chelly? Jeremy will be in touch with you to set up these meetings to supplement, and we will be working on. Item 6.
Mayor Council, in 2017, you approved a TIP redevelopment agreement with a company called Streeter II LLC. It's really the Baskin-Robbins Dunkin' Donuts shop up at the corner of Marilla Park Road and Highway 23. They elected, subsequent to this, to the 2017 agreement, to build their project in two phases, and you perhaps have seen that. There's three doors on the north side of the project that have been constructed. They built all the foundation, all the plumbing for the second phase, but they haven't built it yet, and because they've had some issues with their leasing company. And so because of that, they have asked for two small amendments to the 2017 redevelopment agreement, which are highlighted in the package material and attached to the resolution. One simply sets the floor on the EAV for purposes of calculating the TIP, which hadn't been finalized when you approved it in 17. And the more substantive revision is it extends from 2018 to 2021 their, the deadline for completing the project, but they expect to have it full and leased in 2020. That just gives them a little bit of extra working room. It's my recommendation to approve your revision.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to amend the 2017 redevelopment agreement between the city of Streeter and Streeter II LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin-Robbins. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Number 7, you've done it. Number 8.
Number 8 is a, a portion of our roadway program this year is to do a cave seal treatment to several streets in town, basically West Second, Freck, Johnson Streets, and then a portion of Cross, being the Freck. Cave sealing is basically a process where there's no oil and chip applied in a micro-surface seal. It's the same thing we did on 12th Street last year, and we've been doing it for several years. It's a maintenance code to extend the life of the pavements, and we had two bids, asphalt stone being the lowest.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve a contract to Asphalt Stone Company for cave seal work on West Second, Freck, and Johnson Streets in the city of Streeter. Still moved. For a second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Number 9?
Number 9, basically every year, 9 to 10 will be the same thing, but every year to use MFT funds for the stone supply and the oil supply for a spray patch machine for Public Works. We put that out to bid. Item 9 is to award the oil, the oil supply contract to Tri-State Asphalt out of Morris. And number 10 is to award the stone supply to Valley View Industries in Cornell. So we had open bids two weeks ago, and those two being the lowest bidders.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve a contract to Tri-State Asphalt LLC to be used in conjunction with maintenance of streets and highways by the city of Streeter under the provision of the Illinois Highway Code. Still moved. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item 10?
I entertain the some contract for the Public Works materials.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve a contract to Valley View Industries for aggregate materials to be used in conjunction with maintenance of streets and alleys by the city of Streeter under the provision of the Illinois Highway Code.
Still moved.
For a second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item eleven?
Item eleven is another component of our 2019 road program. We'll be doing work along East Broadway Street from Hart Street to the bi-duck, basically completing work over the past, I think, that'll be from the west end to the east end of Broadway Street in City Limits. Will all have been reconstructed then in the past six or seven years, so that work will be done. It'll be curving gutter from Hart Street to the Oak Fork Southern tracks, and then just a melon overlay from the tracks to the bi-duck, which is already curving, east of the tracks. So that work will, is a portion of this. Right around the corner over here, a little, a little gotten-to spot in town, LaSalle, Little LaSalle Streets, a lot of years since there's been any work done down there, so a portion of this job is that. And then the last portion of the job is we're going to relay a brick street. So the 100 block of West Stanton, I will have the bricks removed, placed to the side, new base put in, compacted, and then the bricks relayed. So that's the first time since I've been here that we're going to attempt it, so we're going to see how it goes.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve a contract to Universal Asphalt, Inc., for roadwork on East Broadway, LaSalle, Little LaSalle, and West Stanton Streets in the city of Streeter.
Sumo moved.
Second? Any other discussion?
All of these projects track with the five-year plan that you approved when you had the substantial funding.
And it was worked planned at railroad tracks, so my place was now that'll all be, it won't be that.
Yeah, we planned it that way.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item twelve?
Item twelve is, anytime we have new commercial entrance to Illinois Route 23 or 18, the state routes in town, IDOT requires that the city pass a resolution saying that we're going to inspect the work to make sure it meets the standards. So this is for the, those of Hollybrook, those of Hollybrook Project on East Main Street, recommend it be approved, and then we'll watch the job and make sure that the entrances are built as planned.
I'd entertain a motion to permit an entrance from Illinois Route 18, East 2002, East Main Street for the Villas of Hollybrook.
Sumo moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye. Item thirteen. Mayor Council, item thirteen comes to you as recommendation, actually, two recommendations. You can act on them separately or together as you wish, giving names to recent improvements to our open space. The Trailhead Park on West Broadway Street, they recommend that it have the name assigned to it that sort of was informally that neighborhood, Twister Hill Trailhead Park, is their recommendation. And that instead of calling the Vermillion River Greenway Trail, the Vermillion River Greenway Trail, they want to call it instead the Hop Along Cassidy Trail. It's more iconic, more unique to Streeter because of, because of that authors meaning from Streeter, and I think that they also see a lot of possibility for logos and tourism appeal by, we already have the Hop Along Cassidy Trail over in the Riverside area, so this is just assigning the same name to all of the trail work, both current and yet to come along the river. Not the whole trail system in the whole city, just puts along the Vermillion River area.
I entertain a motion to place on the file and approve the naming of the Trailhead Park, the Twister Hill Park, and the River Greenway Trail, the Hop Along Cassidy Trail.
Sumo moved.
Second? Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item fourteen. Mayor Council, for reasons I explained in the transmittal memo on this, we're a little bit late in getting you the 2017 financial report, but we've given you the report last week, and Anthony Servini with Sickich is here to give you a brief summary.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening. On behalf of Sickich, I'd like to thank the mayor and members of the council for the invitation this evening to present the results of our audit of the city. And as Scott had noted, some unique challenges in terms of the first year transition on that. The primary factor, as Scott laid out in his memo, being the capital asset history had not been kept up to date, so I actually worked quite a bit with Jeremy on the engineering estimates for that going back several years to repopulate that information so to see the impact of that on one of the schedules. My presentation will focus on the largest of the bound documents presented as part of the audit, the comprehensive annual financial report, the city logo on the cover. Comprehensive annual financial report is also a new report issued by the city this year. Previously, the city has issued an annual financial report. Comprehensive annual financial report is a document that goes well above and beyond the minimum recording requirements, both the Illinois compound statutes as well as generally accepted accounting principles. So do commend the city for taking the steps to prepare this document. It's really done in the spirit of transparency, disclosure, and full accountability to your taxpayers, your constituents, and any others that may have invested interest in the city's financial position or changes in financial position. Some of the major changes in the comprehensive annual financial report includes the introductory section, as well as a section at the back that includes a certain trend data, the statistical section as well, so I'll highlight a few items for you on that as well. If you have the document in front of you, you can turn to page Roman numeral three in the introductory section. This is printed on city letterhead and is referred to as the letter of transmittal. City prepared a letter of transmittal for the first time this year. This is a very good letter of transmittal and recommend reading this in conjunction with management's discussion and analysis, which I'll cover in just a few moments. A letter of transmittal is a unique component to the comprehensive annual financial report. It's really management's one opportunity to present a subjective discussion of what occurred during the course of the year, and also kind of look towards the future in terms of what may be happening in the city from a whether we develop in standpoint or other financial impact. Turning past the Roman numeral pages, you'll come to regular page number one in the document. This is the independent auditor's report printed on Sickich's letterhead. Called to your attention this evening, a couple items. The first, bold section, management's responsibility for the financial statements. Management is ultimately responsible for the fair presentation of the city's financial statements as done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as set forth by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board or GASB. Our responsibility as auditors is outlined in the next paragraphs. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on our financial statements based on our audits, conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. On the top of page two, the opinion section, pleased to present to the mayor and council this evening that we've issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements as of and for your fiscal year end of December 31st, 2017. That clean, unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance as auditors that we can provide, and it means that our opinion that financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with those generally accepted accounting principles. So again, commend the city for receipt of that unmodified opinion. Again, that's, that's the gold standard from the reporting standpoint, so that you want to see. Turning back a few pages, you'll come to a page numbered, page MDNA1. This is the management's discussion and analysis. Kind of document prepared by the city, management's discussion and analysis. If you're going to look at nothing else within the comprehensive annual financial report, I would call your attention to this component. This is an opportunity to look at not only consolidated or information pulled from the basic financial statements for the current year, it also includes prior year information, but most importantly, in my opinion, it includes management's explanations for why things have changed from one year to the next. Really is the one spot within the comprehensive annual financial report that management is able to provide that context in terms of financial reporting. Turn with me now past the rest of the pages notated with the MDNA marks, and come to regular page number four. This is the statement of net position. This is presented on what we call the Economic Resources Measurement Focus on Full accrual Basis of Accounting. High level, this scheduled statement of net position is your balance sheet. Includes all of your capital assets that are used in operations for the city, both from a governmental activity standpoint, your taxpayer-supported standpoint, as well as your business-type activities. That includes your sewer, golf, and your solid waste funds. The far right column, you'll see the component unit as required by the Illinois compound statutes and by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. The Streeter Public Library is included as a component unit within the city's comprehensive annual financial report. On this page on the bottom, you'll see a section titled net position. The second line from the bottom does highlight a few numbers here for you. The unrestricted net position for your governmental activities as of December 31st, 2017 was a $21.2 million deficit. Now, if you recall, several years ago, when the city implemented GASB payment number 68, recording the pension liabilities for IMRF, as well as the police and firefighters' pension, that's what really drove this from a positive unrestricted net position to a deficit net position. We factored out some of those accounting changes for it, that'd be about $2.5 million in terms of your unrestricted. However, again, GASB drove that change there, so looking over, looking at this from an overall economic perspective is why you see that $21.2 million deficit. Your business-type activities had a positive net position, unrestricted category, about The next page is a statement of activities, pages five and six. Two items of note for you here, your overall change in net position for your governmental activities, decreased about $4 million, primarily driven to pension changes during the course of the year. I'll highlight a few additional items as I complete my remarks this evening for you, but primarily, again, driven by some pension changes that flowed through your financial statements for the December 31st, 2017 year end. You also see a line, two lines below that titled Prior Period Adjustment. These are some of the various corrections that we made during the course of the audit and ensuring that everything in the city's financial statements was presented, and again, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Your governmental activities saw an increase in your net position of $11.6 million. The majority of that related to the recording of those capital assets that had not been recorded for several years, so that's what the major increase is from an opening net position standpoint. On the next page, page seven, the balance sheet for your governmental funds. This is presented on what we call the Current Financial Resources Measurement Focus on the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. Simply put, we've taken out those capital assets, taken out those long-term liabilities, presenting more of a budget-type presentation that you're used to seeing. This will be more aligned to what you'd see on a monthly basis from a reporting standpoint. Your general fund column, your far-left column, looking at that figures, your general fund, unassigned fund balance, so the third line from the bottom, December 31st, 2017, just over $3 million. A $3 million is a good ratio to look at, is to compare that to your general fund expenditures. Cities have approximately 25% of general fund expenditures, so you have a solid reserve there, generally three to six months of operating expenditures in that unassigned fund balance in the general fund, kind of a benchmark to, to look at there. Turning back to page nine, we'll find our items for presentation this evening, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Looking at, again, the fifth line from the bottom is your net change in fund balance here. Your general funds for the year had a decrease of $832,000. Your North Point TIP III had expenditures, you know, getting that TIP as the increment comes in later, you'll see that off, that deficit offset there to a tune of $2.1 million. Your non-major governmental funds, about $1.4 million in terms of the increase there. So overall governmental funds had a decrease of about $1.5 million for the year. On page 13 is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. This is for your proprietary funds or your business-type activities, again, your sewer, golf course, and solid waste fund. Again, looking at that fifth line from the bottom, you'll see the change in net position. Sewer funds had a net position increase of about $451,000 for the year. Golf, essentially due to the transfer-in, has about a break-even, about $5,600, and solid waste fund had an increase of $75,000. The last few items that I'll cover for you this evening, mayor, if we turn to page 80 in the comprehensive annual financial report, just a brief highlight of, I call it, page 78, actually, would be a brief highlight to just where the funded status is of the city's pension funds. As of December 31st, 2016 for IMRF, so the timing of the information, we'll use the information there, 87% as of December 31st, 2016. On pages, on page 80, two pages back, we'll see that same calculation for the post pension fund as of December 31st, 2017, 46% funded, and for the firefighters' pension fund on the following page, about 27% funded. Now, the firefighters' pension fund did have a significant decrease this year in its funded status. That's primarily driven by some changes in terms of the actuarial assumptions. However, in discussions with the city and the actuary on that, we would expect some correction on that for your December 31st, 2018 valuation due to some assumption changes and how those amounts are being funded. Mayor, that concludes my comments on the comprehensive annual financial report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you or the councilmen have this evening.
Anthony gave a good summary, and we've enjoyed that, working with him, it's been a good experience. He talked mostly about the aggregate reserves, which are pretty healthy. That should not disguise the fact that while we shoot for three to four months of reserve, we do not have that in general fund, and that is our most sensitive fund. We're actually, based on the reserve policies that you have enacted, we're about two months in a general fund, so we need to make that a little help moving forward. That doesn't disguise the aggregate weight that you report.
Correct. Any other questions? Anthony?
Thank you. Very good question.
Thank you very much.
I recommend that you have a motion received filed for.
I'd entertain a motion to place on the file and approve the 2017 Certified Annual Financial Report for the city of Streeter.
Sumo moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item 15. I'd entertain a motion to place on the file and approve the mayoral appointments.
Sumo moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Mayor Council, there are a couple revisions to the bond warrant total, which I think that the city clerk is giving you to add the consent agenda.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with a warrant total of $719,457.50. Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
City official comments? Anything?
Jerry, I've had, I know we've had issues with Main Street and Oak Creek at that SAB sign, and we've ordered a new one. Do you want to go in?
It'll be the spring. Actually, I had to get a permit, it had to be permitted to the state, so you'll be seeing a permit, looks like the one for all the Hollywood coming in the coming months, and we'll be able to install it.
There's, I know the place that halted out there, but there was another truck today that ran it, so we have issues out there. My other one that I wanted to say, I just, isn't in the paper, but I was honored to represent Streeter at the Illinois Governors Conference on Tourism a couple weeks ago. Four people were able to go, so it was nice to be one of four. And I think it just shows, I always tout the volunteers of Streeter, but when we're in a category of budgets of $500,000 and below, and that's like 10 to 20 years of Streeter Tourism's budget from our politics, so it's, we're in heavy competition, and our committee, our tourism board's all volunteers, so it just, I'm always, I'm always proud to tout that fact because we're, that's very rare up there, and to be recognized as a community for an event done by volunteers, it doesn't happen often, so I think Streeter should be proud to win best in state for that. Thank you.
Here it's cold white thunder, but, yeah, I read your notes. But the Waldogs did an outstanding job to be the best event in Illinois in 2018. The only ones to be excluded from that are people like Chicago in that same category. Downtown Chicago won first place for best event, and Streeter won in the lower competition of $500,000 less, and we have Waldogs in here, Tara led that event. I can't say enough about all the things that she did to make that happen. It was a three or four-year piece of work for her, and thank you very much. That whole community should be very proud. Right?
Just a couple things, like our mayor said, with the 30 years to build that park out south, it does take a long time to get things going. I know Scott will be leaving us, but I don't know how much of this I will say, but it does take a long time to do things, and with the, with the factor expansion coming, you're gonna see, I think, a, a nice jump in home sales, but there is, I wouldn't say it's a shortage, but there are plans in city with Scott's help, is working on other ways to help these people find homes, and I think we're in a good position right now, and what a wonderful thing that is the factor is. The other comment I had is, I seen our governor pass the $15 minimum wage bill today, and I, not here to discuss it, but, and I'm gonna keep an open mind, but I was wondering what the impact, we'll have to watch it in Streeter, because, you know, the proof will be in the pudding, but I would like to, to see where that goes, but that's a big step, so. What's on there, Jim?
I would just like to reemphasize the importance of working together, you know, when there's something that needs to be accomplished. And with Sam Moselli, you know, what he's done with Factor and Federal Signal, the City of Streeter, the Greater Livingston County Economic Development Group, and Streeter IDI, all of those individuals were, different groups were very much involved in this process that took place. And what it really means to the community is that Federal Signal really has taken a stand and said that Streeter is a place that they want to be. Now, the more workers that we have that are available, the more people that work there that live in this community, support this community, and things of that nature, is what would keep them here. And if you talk to any manufacturer in this community, and we have a variety of those, they all say that one of the most important things that we have is our workforce. So then you bring in the education systems and saying, how can you help us develop the workers, the workforce that we need to keep these jobs here, which keeps these factories here? And to accomplish something like that, and the state of the economy of Illinois, and what Illinois has been through for the last several years, is really quite a feat. We didn't have outside help, they didn't come in and help us. We worked together to make it happen ourselves, the groups that really took an interest in it and said, this is something we want to see happen. We know that there are factories moving out of the state all the time. I just saw that there was one that, in Milan, Illinois, a factory that makes rifles, firearms. They have 110 employees, they're moving into Iowa, and so all of those jobs are gonna be gone. Now, did they have stayed here, whatever, I don't know, but the, you know, not the fact that I'm advocating the firearm industry or whatever, but they have a contract fulfilled for a foreign country, and they said that economically they need to relocate, and that's what they're doing. Now, the governor came out, the governor came out today and has said several things, but will any of them materialize or not? It remains to be seen, but we can't wait for somebody to come in on a white horse and say this, because it's not gonna happen, we're gonna have to do it ourselves. And I think it really reflects on this community that they do things the right way, and it's showing up. The, I attended a meeting today, and I don't know how many of you are maybe aware of it or not aware of it, but in 2017, 2018, and what they're proposing for 2018, Owens, Illinois and Streeter will have spent 50-plus million dollars reinvested into Streeter plant. It's a lot of money, and that could've went probably anywhere else, but it's staying here. And I think there's a lot of others there that you look at them and talk to them, we know that that has happened. And, and I don't have the exact figure, but I would be willing to bet that in the last three years, that there has been over $100 million invested in this community by the employers that we have here. It's a lot of dollars, it's a lot of jobs, but we have to have the workforce to do it. The, this added budget presentation, it's not bad, but it's gonna have to get a lot better, because things are not gonna improve unless we do things necessary to make that happen, so. Now I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the full session for the purpose of discussion of the employment, employment, and compensation personnel. So moved. Your second?
Second.
Clerk call roll please. Deedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lanisberg?
Aye.